...the President and Board of Trustees, Villages, Cook County, Illinois. Today is September twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen. If this time I will ask a question.
Trustee Pat?
Here.
Trustee Bonner?
Present.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Here.
Trustee Claybrook?
Here.
We have a question. Question, President, please. Please, Mr. Lee, Mr. Lee, Mr. Pat.
I would like to introduce the Senate Fire Department of the United States of America into the public for which stands one nation, one God, and a reasonable, and a right to a team and justice for all.
Is there any approval or corrections of the minutes of July twenty? You have nine, two thousand nineteen. Are there any corrections?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
The motion is approved by the District Captain. Approve the minutes on July ninth, two thousand nineteen. Need a second?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Claybrook. We'll try to take a look.
Trustee Pat?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Present.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
All right, motion passed. Thank you. Before we open the meeting to the public, if anyone has anything to state or want to do with a... Hold on, we have a second.
Yeah, I make a motion.
No, we gotta do it for the special meeting. We also need a correction for the second special meeting we had on the twenty-ninth of August. Any corrections for those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the August twenty-ninth meeting.
We approve the special meeting for August twenty-nine, two thousand nineteen. Need a second?
Second.
Let's try to take a look.
Trustee Pat?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Present.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you. Before we open the meeting to the public, if anyone has anything to say, if you would stand and give your name, make your statement, and we will have to hear it, and I'll ask for a motion to open the meeting to the public.
I'll make a motion to open the meeting to the public.
A motion for about trustee Claybrook. Do we have a second?
Yes. I second.
Second by trustee Bonner. We'll try to take a look.
Trustee Pat?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Thank you, Pat. The meeting is now open to the public. Is there any public comments? Any public comments?
Good evening. My name is Jacqueline Cosby, and I live on... I live in Burnham. I live on one hundred forty-first and Benson. I have two apple trees on my block, one directly across the street from me and down the street from me. Those apples is coming to the sewer. My house is right in front of the sewer, it's right in front of my house, and some of the apples is going down in there. I'm the only one that get the apples up on the street.
Okay, well, the tree that's on the east side is on the village roadway. The one that's on the west side is on the pressure of property in the people's yard and that post, I mean, a little bit of a different issue, so... The one on the east side on the roadway, you know, cut down there, and the one in the yard, I hope we can get them.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Are there any other public comments? I'll ask for a motion to close the meeting to the public.
I'll make a motion to close the meeting to the public.
A motion for about trustee Claybrook to close the meeting to the public. Do we have a second, please?
Second.
Second by trustee Richardson. We'll try to take a look.
Trustee Pat?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
All right, motion passed. Meeting is now closed to the public. I'd like to say welcome back from the summer recess. It's good to see everyone again. And I would like to say the... Officer Black King passed away a year ago, September the twelfth, and on this past Saturday, in the front of Police Department, retired his star, worked with the Star Seventy-five. He had a presentation here, trustee Bonner was there for myself, and just have a plaque out there on the wall so you can view it when you go out and take a look at that, so... So, we always unfortunate thing when we lose somebody from the staff, so... So, the other thing is that, I mean, on the agenda tonight, we have a program for water meter replacement. We have a little bit more detailed into that when the people get up to speed, and we have an item on the agenda for the day and through housing development group. We're gonna discuss that when we get to that as well. And we have a survey here for cannabis, and the survey states that would you be for or would you be against one or more cannabis stores coming to the village of Burnham? So, this survey here, so if you vote yes, then please put your initials there. If you vote no, put your initials there, put your name, address, and phone number. Now, some people have asked me, said, "Is anybody gonna see that?" I don't know about know how I voted. I mean, it will be confidential. It will be confidential. And so, we'll be circulating the survey after the meeting, and the way the law is written is that if we don't opt out of it, in January the first, then any person who wants to come in and install it, whether it be on or not. So, right now, I wanna get the input from the people of Burnham, and right now, today, the survey looks like it's about fifty-fifty, so... So, we're gonna continue, so we're gonna try to speak to at least a thousand people in the survey. And we were supposed to have a... You know, Dr. Wright was supposed to be coming tonight to talk about doing a vegetable day here in Burnham, so...
I'm here.
Oh, that's really okay.
That's it, that's it.
Okay, you can talk during the meeting before, so you can stand up and explain.
Oh, right now?
Yes.
Oh, wow. Well, good evening, everyone. It's an honor and a pleasure to be here. I'm Dr. Jafunza Wright Carter. I'm a Cook County trained family physician, and I've been using food as medicine for well over thirty years. And I'm also organic farmer. I'm in my farming outfit. I know I don't look like a physician right now, but we are... I mean, we have a farm in Pembroke Township, just south of here, and we've been for six years training the next generation of black farmers. And so, we would like very much to inform everyone that there is a little over a hundred thousand dollars available in leap match dollars, thanks to Cook County Health. And it was initially earmarked for the south suburbs, because this is one of the most challenging areas for people getting enough food and quality food, for a number of reasons that I'm sure a lot of you know. And so, we would love to be able to bring a market to you. We try our best to have one-stop shop, a combination of local foods that have been grown, most often to the south of here, as well as a wide variety of favorites, you know, for the season. So, we have until December thirty-first to have the southern Cook take full advantage of this opportunity. And so, I just wanted to let everyone know that we are more than willing to come to Burnham and give the residents an opportunity to take advantage of having fresh, portable, local, organically grown foods, as well as other items, dry goods, cold grains, beans, legumes, herb spices, and teas. We do trainings around what the therapeutic value of the foods are, as well as have demos and tastings. And we're planning to do blood pressure checks. You know, we'll go over the medications in the food that helps to bring the blood pressures down, as well as better diabetes management. Those have been our two major diseases that we've been focused on. We also work with women, infants, and children, and just a host of other diseases as well. So, it would be an honor to be of service here in Burnham.
I think that we have kind of tendered to the state that we would try to come up with a date in October.
Okay, wonderful.
Dr. Wright, thank you so much for coming. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you.
This is huge. I mean, you know, having organic and having a doctor presented and give us education on what the benefits of food, you know, are foods that we consume, that's huge. Thank you so much.
It's an honor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Also, what is it that Burnham has to do, and what will the residents of Burnham... How will it... How will the program interact with the residents?
Well, that's a good question. There's two options here. What we have found, and maybe Burnham is an exception, but people have been so economically strapped that even to get started with a prescription bag, because at Cook County Health, the physicians are actually writing prescriptions. So, the diabetics, hypertensives, folks with cancer, you know, children are coming to the market, but they're having difficult time with even just paying for the food. And so, what we would love is, is that if there was a gift of health that could be given to the residents by the Burnham municipality, five dollars a bag, and in that way, that can help the folks who are challenged, is what it is that we're asking. You know, in addition to, of course, marketing and promotions, you know, really getting the community out to take full advantage of this opportunity.
And the mayor and the clerk, they have your contact information?
Absolutely.
Oh, awesome. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
The training, would that include educating?
Yes. Yeah, we educate during the market. We have electronic exhibit. We do some workshops and classes when I'm freed up. We actually work with patients one-on-one or market goers when they come in, if they have questions about different types of foods, because we not only go over the foods and the therapeutic value, but how to prepare them. Like, I love to talk about, in particular, collard greens are a very popular cultural food, and believe it or not, they have a phytonutrient in them called glucosimolates, but guess what? And it actually helps to heal the inner lining of the arteries. But guess what? You have to cook it for only five to seven minutes to get that nutrient, and that's the last thing that we do. You know, we cook it for hours, and we throw some extra things in there, depending on which family, and so we don't get a chance to access that medicine that's in the food. So, that's one of the things that we do, is we actually prepare the food on-site. Folks can see how, they can taste it, and, you know, sometimes it's enough to say... For a person to say, "Oh, yeah, I can do this," and they're starting to increase the, you know, their wellness practices.
Is there a possibility that Burnham could start their own organic garden? Do you all help set up something like that?
Well, put it this way. If that's something that you needed, then we can certainly, through our network, assist. You know, we have been very focused on our youth learning, commercial, organic farming, you know, in the rural area, but our commitment is a local food network that spans from urban, suburban, to rural. So, if that's something that you need, we certainly can see what we can do to assist.
Okay, well, thank you. You have a question?
Yes. Yeah, woman, yes. I noticed, watching the news, there are so many different towns and cities that are creating different types of gardens, and they're learning, and I think even the Cook County jail has a garden, so this is something that I think is very beneficial, educating and learning and sort of creating, you know, something of that value.
Okay, and so, what I'm hearing from the trustees is that if there was perhaps in addition to us being able to, like, do blood pressure checks when we come, or doing the demos that we've spoken about, and one of the demos you would like to have happen is, like, ways that people can do their own gardens, or... I mean, like, for instance, even if we do it in October, you can put garlic in that time of year, and it takes all winter to grow, so we could do something simple like that. Okay.
I have a question. How's the setup process? Does it bring all the vegetables and everything?
Yes, we do. We bring the vegetables and the fruits, the dry goods, everything, but when you give me a contact person, we'll work through the details, because we'd also like to hire someone locally, you know, to help with running the market when we come. Okay?
Thank you, Senator.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Black and merchandise invited me a month or so ago when I met you in Lansing, over there, in Cal City, I'm sorry, and I came to that event, and the fruit was selling so well, the people were buying it, and I was one of the first ones there, but I waited too long, so I just...
Yeah, it was really a stampede almost.
So, I'm glad that she made the connection between you and myself, and I like to be here so you could help us to come out as well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Let's see, I have a... Can I try to do for your report?
Evening, everyone. I just have two. On Friday, September thirteenth, the Secretary of State Mobile Unit came to the Community Center, and we had a total of seventeen... A total of thirty-two participants. Oh, it is seventeen, I'm sorry. Seventeen participants that came to either renew their driver's license or state ID.
In fact, there were three more than the last time, so...
The Office of Cook County Treasures, Maria Pappas, is urging homeowners to update their mailing address in order to them to receive the actual real estate bill. You can do that on the website, which is cookcountytreasure.com. So, they're really urging for the homeowners to update their mailing address in order to get the vital information that they need in order to pay the real estate taxes. So, again, it's cookcountytreasure.com.
Okay, well, thank you for your information. Our public education and health safety, we have trustee Greer.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I would like to welcome everyone for coming out this evening, and also for our YouTube audience. We'd like to welcome you also. Let's see. Burnham's fire and medical reports. For the month of July, there were a total of thirteen fire calls. There were six during the day and thirteen and seven during the night. For the ambulance, they were really, really busy. There was a total of thirty-six calls, twenty-three during the day and thirteen during the night. For the month of August, a total of fire calls, there were a total of twenty-four, fourteen during the day and ten during the night. Ambulance calls, forty-four total, twenty-six during the day and eighteen during the night. As you know, the recreational marijuana will be included in January twenty-twenty. Just some little information. Eventually, there will be sixty dispensaries that might be operating in the state of Illinois. There is... Some people are concerned that it might attract crime, and the marijuana dispensary is scheduled to open in Homewood, eleven thirty-seven West one hundred and seventy-fifth Street, for your information. As you know, their census will be coming soon. Your response to the twenty-twenty census is safe, secure, and it's protected by federal law. Some people are reluctant about opening the door to census takers, but again, it is safe, secure, and it's protected by federal law. Your answers can only be used to produce statistics that can be used, and they cannot misuse you in any way, so if you choose... Don't be afraid to open your doors. It's for all of us, it's for our health. And the census is used in many, many ways. It can affect the business. It's a decision, it helps to make decisions for the government. It's planning for the future government, and it's good for medical research, just many, many ways. So, again, you're safe, secure, and it's protected by the federal law.
Trustee, if I may add to that, it is also very significant that we participate in the census, so there's a good possibility, I mean, very good possibility, we might lose a congressional district in this area, so that's a good possibility, so that's very important.
And also, you may be able to do it online, and if you notice someone that is interested in being a census taker, there's a training program. They do start off, I believe, at eighteen dollars an hour. You will be fully trained. So, it's good information. I'd like to thank everyone that participated in our Community Day. It was wonderful. And again, as I always say, there is no success or not. It takes a team and a group of everyone in order to make this Community Day successful. And I especially like to thank our coordinators, Andrew and Tanya of Community, Andrew and Tanya, and Jackie, Miss Josephine, Charlotte, Pearl, and a host of others that helped to make our Community Day successful. Thank you all so much. Just a reminder, Saturday, August the nineteenth, at Sandridge Community Center, there's a Community Day resource. There... I'm sorry, did I say October? October the nineteenth. Various organizations will be presented to provide information about resources and services available to community members. There will be giveaways and a variety of activities for all age groups. It's called Resource Day. That's from eleven to AM to three PM. That's October the nineteenth. October the twelfth is a breast cancer forum. It will be held at the Odyssey Country Club in Tinley Park, and it's presented by the University of Chicago Madison. And if you would like more information about this, please see me after the meeting. As you know, October the twenty-eighth will be Hispanic Heritage Month celebration, and it will be held at the Huntington Drive in Calumet City, and it's always a wonderful program. You can learn about the culture and history, music and dance, and also they have very good food. So, that's September the twenty-eighth. Senior counseling and support groups. It's every Thursday from twelve-thirty to two PM at the Thornton Township Senior Center. That's in Huntington Drive. Light refreshments will be served, so if you need to have counseling, or you need to talk to someone, someone will be available to talk, every Thursday from twelve-thirty PM to two PM. And individual counseling is available by appointment only. Jazz in the Park, Sunday, October the twenty-fifth, four to nine PM. Tickets are fifteen dollars. This is done by Dalton Park District, and I heard that it was a very, very nice affair. It began that Sunday, August the twenty-fifth. To our line dancers, as everyone know that we do have line dancing classes. This is going on our second, I believe, our second year. We've been doing it for about a year and a half. There's been a change in our line dancing schedule. The weather is changing, and families are making personal plans for the holidays. Therefore, our line dancing schedule is changing for the center. We have met new friends, so please continue to line dance with us, learn new steps, and continue to have fun. It's a wonderful way of exercising. Time will remain the same, ten AM to twelve noon, and if anyone needs a schedule, I do have it available. Just a reminder that CBS says they would like to keep you and your loved one healthy. They have the vest seams in stock, so you can always acquire other vest seams, but you may be able to order... You can get your vest seams at CBS. There you can get your pneumonia, your hooping cough, your hepatitis A or B, your meningitis, your measles, and I understand measles is really being very rapid right now. Measles must are the rubella. So, in stock today, there's no appointment necessary, and they're covered by most insurance, and this is your CBS, right there on the corner of Torrance and Sidney. Last thing is, we are looking to have a monitor installed outside of the hallway for announcements. We plan on doing some painting to refresh the entryway, so we just wanna let you know. And we thank you all, and again, thank you for coming.
Thank you, trustee Greer, for your report. That is great. We appreciate it. If you have a word on Bill, then you have to take a look.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Please, well, the trusties, partners, stand back. I... And also, the village has trimmed and removed about twenty trees over the summer, and we will be planting about ten more trees this fall. Also, we were replacing several damaged sidewalks throughout the village, and that project will be starting this week. And the last thing I have is the retention pond behind the village hall. It was cleaned up, and all the grass and tall grass and leaves were cut down, so it looks real nice up there now. You know, that's all I have.
Competitive price is eight, seven hundred dollars.
Yeah, awesome.
Thank you, trustee Claybrook, for your information. The ordinance resolution, we plan, trustee Cap, if you take in and out, trustee Garcia, will you read and then we'll pass this.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action on the resolution to waive competitive bidding and authorize the execution of purchase agreement between the Village of Burnham, Cook County, Illinois, and the Lewis Group Incorporated and Calumet City Plumbing Company Incorporated, providing for the procurement and installation of approximately twelve hundred new AMR water meters in the amount of five hundred and forty-six thousand dollars.
Okay, before we make a motion, I would like for Mr. Lewis to stand up and give a presentation, and I would like to do to invite the people that's gonna be involved in this process, and let's do it in that order.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you, councilor. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I just wanted to start off by saying that this project would take the Village of Burnham into the twenty-first century as it relates to the water system. And when I say that, we're talking about an AMR process would allow the village to basically be conservative when it comes to the water and help everyone save and retain their water for the long term, meaning that I know you've been hearing a lot about water in the news here lately, and a lot of things you hear in the water is based on making sure we conserve water, because in the future, water is gonna be a very expensive commodity based on the shortage. So, by us taking and implementing this process, you'll basically be stepping into the twenty-first century, which would allow us the opportunity to get ahead of those higher, you know, rates and shortages of water in the future. So, the Village of Burnham will basically be protecting the citizens and helping move forward into the twenty-first century. So, I wanted to also make sure that I introduce the team that's pretty much got over fifty years of experience when it comes to the installation and the procurement of taking care of the system like this, and that would be Mr. Mike Giglio from Calumet City Plumbing, and he can explain to you his expertise in all of the meter installations that he has done across the state as well.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The members of the board and residents of the... Residents of the Village of Burnham, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you. Water meters, it's... There's roughly twelve hundred meters in the Village of Burnham. I'm not sure of the age that the current ones are in, it's my understanding.
No.
They're beyond the lifespan. We have installed just over... We just clipped over seventy-seven thousand meter replacements last month. We've done towns as far as Arlington Heights, as close as Calumet City and Lansing, so my guys are thoroughly skilled in it, in my opinion. On the installation end, they work Monday through Thursday, ten-hour days, they're off on Friday, and then they alternate Saturdays for appointments. The appointments start at eight o'clock in the morning unless homeowners need it earlier, and the installers work until about six o'clock at night. Saturdays, I'm not sure what it is, but they're always getting out early on Saturdays, so not exactly sure why. The... They drive around in lettered trucks, so there's no question as to who they are. They have badges, background checks provided by the Village of Burnham on any of my employees that would be going into residents' homes. And they also do the programming of the meters and the equipment they have. They can check for accuracy right at that time, make sure everything's wired the way it's supposed to be, reading the way it's supposed to be, flush the system, make sure the homeowners have good water pressure, or at least as good or worse. Obviously, with older systems, it's low water pressure can be an issue. They do have the equipment on their truck to attempt to restore the water pressure and certainly not... certainly not leave the homeowner in a lurch. And we appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve the Village of Burnham and the residents.
So I just wanted to also bring up our specialist from Sensus, which is the meter company that we're currently using in the Village of Burnham. And Sensus is pretty much the leader in the industry when it comes to meters. And they have technology, which they call the smart meter system. And everyone's hearing all of this, you know, smartphone technology and, you know, smart tablets. Well, we're going to turn the meter system into a smart meter system, which would allow us to indicate and discover leaks early on. So it would also help out residents as well with the smart technology. And we're going to have Mr. Jack from Sensus speak in regard to the smart meter technology.
Go over here. Or, resident. I'm with Corn Bay. We're a distributor, local distributor for Sensus meters. I've been calling on Burnham for thirty years. And a lot of your meters are older than I am. And what we're just trying to do is provide you-
Well, I thought that was not going into that one. I am, but okay.
I was going to say they're older than I am.
Some are older than me, and I'm fifty-six. But I work with Calumet City Plumbing, doing many projects in the area. Again, we just finished Calumet City. We worked with Dalton. We worked at, uh, we just finished a Frested Park. We have a strong presence in, in, in the area. And what we're, as Andre mentioned, you know, we're trying to bring you guys into the twenty-first century. You've got some real technology in, with these meters. I think the city's going to be able to monitor your system and, you know, be able to provide you guys with better services.
And so is it safe to say that, that we will be billing on a monthly basis once we get these, on a monthly basis, we'll be billing? So if a person received a bill in January, and they were able to deal something, that would be accounted decent in the last thirty days, we sold out of the tenant, or not, right?
Yes. Yeah, we'll be able to find instances of problems much quicker. You know, instead of, you know, waiting three months to find out that you've got a leak in your house, we'll be able to do that, you know, within a much shorter period. And then ideally, we get to the point where we'll be able to monitor it twenty-four seven.
Yes. And then you said that's the leak that's within the home, from where the meter starts to where it distributes each point?
Correct.
And how often do these, do these meters have to be calibrated?
They never have to be calibrated.
Never?
They, they have a twenty-year lifespan, and they are warranted to meet new meter accuracy standards for that twenty years.
Guaranteed for twenty years?
Correct.
But what's the longest lifespan, you know, they're guaranteed for twenty? Do they last for fifty years, and we have to replace them?
They're, we warranty the, the accuracy of the meter for twenty years, and we warranty the battery for twenty years in that area. Well, there is a little bit of fudgeback, and we expect that meter to last a little bit longer than twenty years. We're not going to, you know, clear our neck out too far, but, you know, we think twenty years is a pretty good lifespan. You know, it's way, it's longer than, you know, what we would never do for a previous meter. But, you know, you can't go beyond that.
The industry standard is what, like fifteen years on most meters? Life expectancy?
Well, it depends on, you know, the, the parameters. We, we have the best in the industry. We're, we guarantee it for, you know, new meter accuracy standards for twenty years. The AWW American Water Works Association goes by a different standard. We just kind of go above that. So older meters will be accurate for, let's say, the first five years at new meter accuracy standards, and then beyond that, used meter accuracy standards beyond that. So what you're guys going to get, because we're moving from a mechanical system, there's literally, you know, that meter you have in your house has got a piston in there that is moved by the water. This is an electronic meter. It doesn't have to, it doesn't have any moving parts inside, so we don't have anything to wear out.
In this paper, you said that if any type of impediment, a blockage, or anything was in the meters, and some clothes or something got packed on the meter, it still would not prevent it from reading. Is that correct?
Uh, well, you'd have to completely stop the flow of water in order for it to not read.
And then, then we would be able to detect that if someone actually tampered with it?
Yes, yes. Yeah, you'll get a report after you do the readings. It'll tell you.
I have another question from the other.
How long does it take to install a meter in a home?
That's a question for-
We, we ask the homeowners to be prepared to anywhere from on the low side, thirty minutes to up to forty-five minutes. If it's going to be anything longer than that, they'll certainly tell them that, or as soon as they know that.
And also, is it safe to say that, because some people's meters are not real accessible, some of them in crawl spaces, some of them are accessible? And if, like I said, on an awkward position, an awkward location, and if you have to do some extra, some extra work or whatever else to ascertain it, then, then that will have to be repaired back to that grid?
Within reason, the installers will go into crawl spaces without a problem. Now, if there's sewage or something like that in the crawl space, they're not going to go with it. Moving a couple of boxes around carefully, you'd be, we get these here, residents, and my installers are a reflection on the village as well. They get that when they're going in the door. So a few items like that, sure. Move the washer a little bit to get behind it to change the meter, not a problem. Now, cut an open drywall to get at it, no, they're not going to do that. Or if it's buried in a corner and you can't access the room.
That's one of the situations like that with the homeowner. Do that, and then they'd have to send you back?
Correct.
So right now, we have residents that disagree with the reading with these older meters. When the new meters, these Sensus meters are installed, there isn't a, there, there wouldn't be a discrepancy then in their reading if they had a high usage. If it ran through the meter, there's no mechanical dysfunction or, you know, it's inaccurate.
Yes, it's very accurate, and also, we can, we can look at the readings every hour. So there'll be, the, the meter records the usage of water hour by hour, so that you can go back and see where the problem was. And that leaves a lot of, of question. You know, if you go back and you can show the resident, I've done this, I've been in people's houses and shown where, like, oh, look, on Saturday, they use water consistently for, you know, forty-eight hours. Oh, well, that's when they fill the pool, or they have a party going on, or whatever, one of the kids left a hose on. So that allows you a lot of knowledge that you can share with the, the homeowner. And that dispels a lot of that, that problem.
And Andre, I think that you, you had said that the goal would try to do get done about seventy-five per week, was that, was that the target?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Mr. Gillio said that would be not a, wouldn't be a problem, but to keep up with that, that number of seventy-five meters per week with scheduled payments.
So when we are ready, we'll start on the east side of town, Professor O'Leary's project, that probably got more problems on that with the meter. And Trusty Richardson and myself will put out a statement to the community over there. And then I know the contractor, you can put out another statement as per the scheduling of time as to when you would be able to meet people.
Correct.
Then other question?
Yeah, I have a question. What about disconnects? I know the shut-off in my house is bad. Will that be changed at that time?
Known, if it's known that it's not functioning, yes. Obviously, they'll need to get on the roundway outside at the B-Box. In an emergency situation, if they can't get on the roundway, there'll be a designated freeze machine, pipe freezing equipment to, to freeze it if necessary. And it's, it's a required part of the plumbing system in your home. You need to have an inside work and shut-off for emergencies or to maintain the home. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Well, again, we'd like to say we thank this for the great adventure for the Village of Burnham. We have a lot of issues and problems, you know, trying to get these readings, and, you know, people calling up saying, oh, I didn't use this much water. We can't get your reading today. They got a pit bull in the house, and you can't get in, and they don't answer the door. So whatever the case is, but once this project is completed, then we will not have to bother you as a resident, and we are able to, let me drive them down the street and take the readings. So we will move into the twenty-first century, that'll be a plus for the Village of Burnham. But seeing, Trusty.
And now, also, I add that this is huge, this is phenomenal. And I'm so proud of the village for, for getting this done. And the timeline looks great. We're, we're actually going to be live billing sometime, you know, next year, and that's huge. And, 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 you know, this is not going to be on the backs of the residents and the taxpayers, but we have a plan to, to pay for this, and it's great. And I'm really happy and, and, and I'm really pleased that we're getting this done. And thank you to everyone involved.
Thank you, Trusty Brown, for the confidence in that information. So if you don't have any further questions with that, Trusty Cap, if you'd rather just begin?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution to waive competitive bidding and authorize the execution of the purchase agreement between the Village of Burnham, Cook County, Illinois, and the Lewis Group Incorporated and Calumet City Plumbing Company Incorporated, providing for the procurement and installation of approximately twelve hundred new AMR water meters in the amount of five hundred and forty-six thousand dollars.
And there's a motion going forward by Trusty Cap to approve this resolution. We need a second, please.
Thank you.
A second by Trusty Richardson, we'll try to take it, well.
Trusty Cap?
Yes.
Trusty Bottom?
Yes.
Trusty Greer?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Claybrook?
Yes.
All right, motion passed. Thank you, Brad, right now. You belong to us now. I find that's Trusty Cap.
I have nothing.
Trusty Cap, I'll be told to Trusty.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, did you know, Scott's Law of Illinois has a moveover law. Requires motorists to move over for the utility vehicles as well as emergency vehicles.
I did not know that.
Me either. And residents, you can now call ComEd yourselves when you notice a streetlight outage. I don't have the number, but you can probably call the-
It should be on the bill.
Yeah, in that too.
And this one, you can call in. You got it on the exact location, whether it's in the alley, where the address is behind, whether it's on the parkway or the alley or the corner, so they need to, they need to put it in.
So you don't have to call to the clerk's office any longer, you can do it yourself. And they're pretty quick about taking care of that. And I have a few more announcements. Thornton Township will start accepting applications for their twenty-nineteen Christmas program for toys and food baskets on Tuesday, October first, between ten and, ten AM and two PM. It's going to go from October first through the fourth. The time's scary, so, you know, we'll put a flyer, we'll, we'll post the flyers so you can know the times. But the, um, the things that you'll need to sign up for this is a photo ID, proof of residence, and you can bring a utility bill, and proof of income for the last thirty days. birth certificate for each member of the household. And you must be a Thornton Township resident to qualify. And this will take place at the Thornton Township Zapp Dispatch Office, one sixty-nine, ten Westview South Island. I'd like to make a comment on that. Several of us in here volunteered during the holidays to wrap the presents and to pack the food. It's very rewarding. And if anyone would like to, to do that, let us know, and we'll let you know when it starts. But it's a lot of work. They have thousands and thousands of toys that have to be wrapped, and it's very rewarding. Yes.
Thank you.
I was saying, a lot, a lot of food and canned goods that need to be packed as well.
Yes, absolutely.
They do, yes, a hundred boxes, probably a day or more. I think we, we were, we did at least, probably did a lot, we only did like thirty.
All right, thank you. Okay, and last, Congresswoman Robin Kelly is sponsoring a hiring event and job readiness boot camp. The hiring event is taking place on October fourth. That's a Friday from nine AM to twelve PM at the Land Oak Park District. And that's located at twenty-five fifty, one hundred and seventy-eighth Street in Lansing. And there'll be more than forty employers actively looking for employees. So if you're interested, remember the date, October fourth, from nine AM to twelve PM. And before that, on Monday, September thirtieth, she's having a job readiness boot camp, where you can go and practice interviewing and having them check out your resume. That's going to take place at the Calumet City Public Library at six sixty South Menste. So that's Monday, September thirtieth, from six to seven thirty PM. And the Burnham Community Feeding Meetings, October seventeenth, at the Village Hall at seven PM. And Dancing with the Stars. We are sponsoring Dancing with the Stars, October fifth, which is Dancing Under the Stars. It's going to take place at our community center, October fifth, it's a Saturday, from five PM to eight PM. Bring your chairs. We're going to have food vendors. Bring a blanket if it's cool. We will have food vendors and good music. Yes.
What did you say prior to that?
About the job community. Oh, okay. The community boot, uh, feed meeting.
The what?
Community feed meeting with the police.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. October seventeenth.
It was brought to my attention that we did not mention about the payments of the meter placement program. I think your first payment would be due in June, June first, like nineteen thousand?
Yes.
Dollar. And it would be nineteen thousand throughout every time, and a lot of it is finishing to be paid, right?
Correct.
And that was over a, a period of one hundred and twenty days?
Yes, one hundred and twenty days in regards to the first payment coming in, out of the net.
Okay. Thank you.
And also, may I add that with the new meters, a lot of, a lot of revenue that was lost, a big chunk of revenue that was lost because it wasn't picking up the reading. So that will help cover the expense of what we've been losing. So this is huge. And then it's affordable.
And we save the environment too, because of water, we don't want to constantly just waste water. When people have leaks, it helps to stop the leaks when you can actually, you know, indicate it early.
You know you have a leak.
All right, yeah.
I thank you, Trusty Richardson, for your report. Parkland Recreation, Trusty Bottom?
Also, the Calumet Memorial Park District, which we're a part of, they will have Afternoon with the Stars Senior Prom for ages fifty-five and older. It says fifty-five and better. Saturday, December fourteenth, from twelve noon to four PM at the Sandridge Center. And there's going to be live music performed by Return to Soul, they're phenomenal. And there will be a twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, king and queen of the, of the event of the senior prom. And the tickets are ten dollars per person in advance and twelve dollars at the door. And this, again, is going to be on December fourteenth at the Sandridge Center. There are flyers available. Please share it with your neighbors.
Thank you, Trusty Bottom, for the report and your information. Is there any presentation of petitions, any communications, memorial, or rest monstices? Well, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for three residents that we lost over the summer. We lost Miss Orain Davis and her sister Tanya here. We lost Mrs. James Hurd. We lost Herman DeGraff, who has taken about a week and a half to come here. All right, thank you. Have they, unfinished business, are they in unfinished business? New business, Trusty Cap, if you can take that.
Motion to approve or not approve amendment to the redevelopment agreement made by, between the Village of Burnham, a body politic organized as municipal corporation pursuant to the laws of the state of Illinois, and- to the laws of the state of Illinois and J&amp;T Group of Illinois LLC and Illinois Limited Liability Corporation.
Okay, well, Mr. Turner, if you could come up and explain what the program is about and what the goal is and if the highly benefited...
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, trustees, clerk, council, residents and guests, Tom Kerner, the owner of J&amp;T Group of Illinois LLC. So in the end of May, we entered into that agreement and it's a dual process. Number one is to take the vacant tax delinquent properties to deed. We're in the process of doing that now, I'm told by attorney who is sort of representing me and Burnham, Mr. Anthony Bass, who accompanied me when we were here in May, that by November first, we would have successfully retained the ten properties. So at that point, we can start selling them, which means we're gonna improve the properties, market and sell them to owner occupants. The second part of the program is I had to secure five hundred thousand dollars to show that I had the financial wherewithal to improve those properties because of course they're vacant and they need some help. So I missed it originally when, when Council Bass wrote it. It was written into the agreement that I had to get a five hundred thousand dollar letter of credit. And my bank actually caught it. So a letter of credit typically is for off-site work, for public work, for dedicated streets, curves, lighting and so on and so forth. Typically, if I'm gonna do a new development, which I've done many in the past, I get a letter of credit from the bank and it presents itself to the village. So if anything goes bad with the developer, the village draws on that letter of credit. In this case, all I'm doing is showing evidence to the board, to the village, that I have a line of credit, which means I have the financial wherewithal to pull money from the bank and complete the said properties. Then partnership with Burnham, we are taking possession of from, through the county so we can improve then successfully and market and sell them. So I'm requesting that amend, amended language, paragraph six of the agreement, that the letter of credit be changed to a line of credit.
And I called you last weekend and asked you if you went home and what would be the impact of the project?
If, if I went home?
Yeah. I don't mean what you did.
Well, of course, I have a survival ship agreement as the bank requires and I do anyway because J&amp;T Group or J&amp;T Home, whatever entity I have, it survives with or without Tom Kerner. So of course then it goes to the named successor, successor. So in this case, it's Tracy Kerner, who's my wife, who's been in the industry for twenty-five years. So it lives on even as something may happen to me. So it's sort of... I appreciate that, thank you. Health first, absolutely. And then just a little bit of an update, unless somebody asks questions, on the language of letter of credit versus line of credit. We did a workshop, a homeownership workshop, the fourteenth of September. We'll do another one the first or second week of November, once we have all the properties that, as I said, Attorney Bass suggests we would have on it before November first.
I'd like to say one of the properties that, sorry, in the near area, you know, has been vacant is probably about two thousand two. Person bought the property, moved to Burnham and so passed away, you know, November, they won't be able to acquire or do anything with it. So, and I know I myself, as the mayor, I've been so proud of them, seeing that house, you know, trying to keep the blast going and I'm fortunate, you know, all these years, we gotta keep going and keep going, so I'm glad to put that bird on you.
I accept a hundred percent.
Tom Kerner?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. I, I know that we approved this agreement back in May.
That's true.
Can you just give the audience a brief synopsis of what that agreement between your, your LLC and the Village of Burnham?
So in different municipalities, there are vacant homes, typically tax delinquent and they just sit. And there, a lot of times, number one, it does not create any tax revenue. Number two, a lot of times they're ISOs. And number three, maybe not as much in Burnham, but they, they can sort of be a site of crime, right? So in this case, we, we take this, these properties over that are identified and agreed upon between me, Council Bass and typically the mayor, and we take possession of them. Once we take possession of them, we rehab them as if they were new homes, new roofs, new windows, and we have renderings of sort of the as-is. And according to Home Design Pro, it's actually architectural software, that we will show the buyer what the home will look like once they purchase it, right? So it helps the values generally, overcoming vacant homes, which is not as much of a problem in Burnham as it is in other municipalities. Just off the cuff, Hazelcrest, which is not so far away, South Suburban Municipality, there's over five hundred of these vacant tax-delinquent properties. So that's certainly a huge issue, but it raises out boats because as, as the mayor knows, as we're sort of out starting to do our thing, well, all of a sudden, different homeowners start improving their property because of course they don't wanna lose it and it's, it helps beautify it, it brings tax revenues and of course a great base of buyers. You don't go in like a lot of rehab people and buy the properties at a sheriff's sale, rehab it and then throw a tenant in there. That's not, that's not what I do. My career has, has really been affordable housing. As a mortgage guy, I traded for twenty-five years and, and opened up the market to put good qualified buyers into the homes of rehab.
So these rehab homes will be purchased and not rented?
Correct. Absolutely.
And the mayor made a very valid point. And, and, and this is an LLC, LLC, that we're basically signing over the, the deed to the home?
Correct.
We own the deeds because of the delinquent taxes or whatever. And so we're signing over these deeds to you. And just say that LLC dissolves. And so is there any verbiage in the contract where these properties will be conveyed back to us?
Well, I think according to the agreement, I have to complete the rehab work within six months from the date the deed is conveyed from the village to me. And generally with what I've seen in Burnham, there are probably thirty to fully five-day jobs to complete, to complete the units. But I, I absorb all the costs to acquire these properties. I put my own money through the bank, of course, to improve them and sell them. And I think to answer your question, there is some language for lack of performance on my end, that if I don't do anything to a home and the deed is in my name, it reverts back to the village of Burnham. Does that help?
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Yeah, I'm sorry. Is that it?
And you said that there's ten properties right now that are going to be assumed as of November?
November first.
And then so from November, and six months from there, we can expect them to be done? In the market?
Not only done, but sold. So one of the things that we do is reach out. We start in the community by holding these workshops, right? So we had one, it's kind of a dress rehearsal, because my, my marketing company sent the flyers, the mailers out a little late. But we'll do another one in November because obviously we wanna reach out to the, the current residents, either have their friends, family or the renters in the community to buy, right? So that's sort of the, the beauty of, of what we're doing.
Two of them on the same block.
That's exactly right. And I always say you can, you can pick your friends, but not your neighbors. In this case, you can actually choose your neighbors, right? So typically what we find is when we go into a home that sat there for three years, ten years, twenty years, the neighbors embrace what we do.
Thank you so much, Tracy.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve amendment to the redevelopment agreement made by and between the Village of Burnham, a body politic organized as a municipal corporation pursuant to the laws of the state of Illinois and J&amp;T Group of Illinois LLC and Illinois Limited Liability Corporation.
There's a motion on fullback, Trusty Cap, to approve the amendment for the J&amp;T Group. We need a second, please. A second by Trusty Claybrook, we'll try to take her on.
Trusty Cap?
Yes.
Trusty Bonner?
Yes.
Trusty Greer?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Claybrook?
Yes.
Discussion to set a special town hall meeting to discuss the state of Illinois with legalization of cannabis dispensary and its effect on the Village of Burnham's residents.
So actually we'll be having more than one meeting, so we will, we have not set a date yet, so we'll, we'll tell them when that's gonna be. And we will also probably have some more discussions about the water meters as well. At those meetings, we'll pass out some flyers about that, so.
No.
We've got some dates up here, we have some dates. We don't have the dates yet, so we'll try to have a meeting. So I'll ask for a motion for adjournment. Before I do that, we have some refreshments and we'd like for you to stay around for those. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. J&amp;T, I think you belong to our town. Mr. Kerner? Do you need a second?
I, I second. Trusty Cap?
Yes.
Trusty Bonner?
Yes.
Trusty Greer?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Claybrook?
Yes.
So good seeing everyone.